All right, so, welcome to the June 27, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. And apologies for us being a little late, we had a work session. So, Carrie, do you want to maybe quickly introduce the new Jackie?
Certainly, thank you Chair members of the Planning Commission. As you know, our Planning Administrative Assistant retired last month, and her replacement is with us here this evening. So Liz Olson will be our new Planning Administrative Assistant, and she will do all of our minutes of all of our meetings, so welcome to Liz.
Great, great, welcome Liz.[105.11][105.11](applause) Yeah, yeah. So, with that, you get to do roll call. Did they tell you about that?
They did, I hope I do it correctly.
There's really easy names.[123.11][123.11](laughter) Go ahead.
Commissioner Landa.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
President.
Commissioner Stroh.
Here.
Commissioner Matal.
He's not here.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Nope, there, he's gone, not here. Tanner?
Commissioner Nemirov.
There you go.
I am here, I am.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Barobi.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here, thank you. So, next we have the approval of the agenda. I'm sorry, were you saying something, Sue? Okay.
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Yeah.
There's one item to be added, and that is to someplace I know we have to approve a new member of the 50th and France Working Group, Smaller Than Group.
Right. And where should that happen, Carrie? Is that, can that be at the end, or do we need to do that? Okay. Okay, any other edits or changes?
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. So, again, we don't have minutes again, is that right? Or, did we have, I didn't see them?
Yes, so, we had, in Jackie's absence, we had an outside agency do it, and so you will have the minutes from that meeting and the one prior to that in your next packet.
Okay, great, thank you. So, let's see, I better get my reading glasses on. So, we have three public hearings, and the first one is a variance request for a setback from Minnehaha Creek using alternate setback standard for 4606 Brown Dale. And that's Chris.
The subject property is located at 4606 Brown Dale. You may recognize it, this home is a pivotal home in the Country Club District. It was one of the first ones, it's a landmark. It was built in 1925. It is on the west side of Brown Dale, it backs up to Minnehaha Creek. It's a two-story home. What you'll notice with the two photographs here is that the upper photograph is the original home, the lower photograph is a current photograph of the home. There really has been little, if any, change to the home, and little, if any, maintenance done over the years. The only real significant change is that they added a garage to the home in about the 1950s. If you look at the photograph on top, the original home had the garage loading sideways, so that you don't see the garage doors. And that was a design standard for a country club. They didn't want to have garage doors visible from the street. Most of the garages are behind the homes in the Country Club District, so that was a very original feature. There's a new owner that has purchased the property. They intend to completely renovate the home. It is in disrepair, so it does need extensive work on the inside. They also would like to bring it up to a more modern building standard by adding on to the home. Just a few more photographs. It is clear that there are some disrepair issues and deferred maintenance issues on the property. This is a view from the creek, it does back up to Minnehaha Creek, it sits up higher from the creek, so there is an increase in elevation from the creek edge. The property is a very large property, actually, for a country club. It's a little over 18,000 square feet. It consists of two lots, which is not what you normally see in the country club, however, the property is quite shallow, and because it backs up to Minnehaha Creek, there's an increased setback from the creek of 50 feet, which causes the home to be non-conforming. The home does overlap into the required setback from the creek. This is a view of the back of the home, and what you'll notice is at the very lower level, at the basement level, it's a walkout, there's a doorway. There's also some lower basement level that you can't see behind the bushes, and the railing on top is, surrounds a patio area that originally had a screen porch with a roof. You can sort of see the attachment where the roof used to be. So, on the main floor, there used to be a porch area above that, and this is the side that backs up to the creek. So, here is a survey of the existing conditions. Again, it's a double lot, unfortunately, it's shallow, so it's constricted in terms of front yard setback, the required side yard setbacks, and the 50-foot setback from the creek. Prior to 1990, the creek setback was 25 feet, and at that time, the home conformed to the ordinance requirements. The closest point of the home is that lower-level door basement area is 31 feet away from the edge of the creek. The closest back corner of the house that would be on the main floor and the second floor is 35 and a half feet. Now, those two setbacks are pointed out, and they're color-coded, because those are the two setbacks that the property owner has tried to work within, in terms of trying to add on to the house. And this next graphic will give you an indication of what that means. The red outline is the required setback for the property. So, when I say it's a nice-sized lot, there's not a whole lot of buildable area opportunity. It's the area within the red outline is where you would have to, if you were to tear down the house, that would be what you would be constrained to. The green line is that 35 and a half foot setback of that back corner of the house, which a majority of the additions in the back of the home are what they're trying to maintain. And they can do that, except that the alternate setback standard allows you to match an existing non-conforming setback, although you're held to an equal amount of encroachment or 200 square feet, whichever is less. Unfortunately, 200 square feet really doesn't give them a whole lot that they can add on to. And then the pink line is the very closest point of the home, which is outlined in black, where that doorway into the basement, and then the upper-level patio area where they used to have a porch above. There's a few pink overlapped areas, which are proposed patio areas, and then it clips the back corner of the house right here. Unfortunately, because of the angle of the creek, that also cuts into the depth of the lot or any opportunity to add on. But they've been very conscientious in trying to maintain the existing non-conforming setbacks and not get any closer to the creek than any portion of the home that currently exists there now. This is a survey just illustrating the same issues. Although highlighted in yellow, it does indicate that the proposed addition would add about 489 square feet of footprint into that non-conforming setback area, and the patio would be about 577 square feet, which there is existing patio in that area that extends to that 31-foot setback. That gives you an idea of the amount of square footage that they're hoping to accomplish, which is not a lot of additional building footprint when you're looking at total renovation and adding on to a home. So, I'll quickly go through, these are the existing floor plans of the house. And again, here on the main level is the garage area that had been side-loading, which was the traditional design requirement for a country club in 1950s. They turned it so that it is a front-loading garage. That will no longer be the case, they will be eliminating that. And then they have a second floor above the main floor. You can see the outline here of that 50-foot setback that cuts into the home. There is a large portion of the home that is non-conforming, given the current setback, which, again, in prior to 1990, it did conform to the setback requirements. These are drawings or renderings of the existing home. This shows you that back walkout area with the patio above that used to have porch area above, a back view, and then also the north view showing the sidewall of the garage that will now turn into garage doors facing north. So this, then, are the proposed improvements. You can look at the setbacks in two different ways. There is this alternate setback standard that allows them some additional square footage in that non-conforming area, or you could simply say that they're going to be 31 feet away at one close point, or 35 and a half feet away, which is the existing non-conforming setbacks, which are basically a 19-foot variance or a 14.5-foot variance for each of those touchpoints. So now, on the main level, they're proposing a side-loading garage, which is a traditional country club feature, and the additions then narrow down to try to accommodate the existing And then the new second floor that would go above that and actually be inset from the lower level of the garage. The new front elevation of the home, south elevation, elevation from the creek, and then the north elevation with the garage doors facing north. So we have some color renderings. This proposal has already been reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Commission, and they have supported the request. There were minutes included in the packet, and I also included in my staff report that they did indicate that they felt that while the addition will change the size and massing of the existing home, that it does not detract from the essential historic character of the subject property or the neighborhood. And it was their opinion that the project meets the requirements of the Country Club District Plan of Treatment and the Secretary of Interior Standards for the rehabilitation of historic properties and recommended approval of the COA. So, Heritage Preservation Board has already reviewed this against their requirements and standards. And there's also been an engineering memo that was submitted and attached to your report. It has been reviewed by engineering. The proposed work does not require any sort of mitigation. All drainage is proposed to go either into the street, or it will not be affecting any adjacent neighbors. And it was also indicated in the report that no mitigation is required from the watershed district. I did have a conversation with Charlie Gurk, who was the engineering staff that reviewed the request. He did indicate that if there was no variance that were required, the plan that was submitted would satisfy the requirements for a permit, and they wouldn't be asking for anything in addition to that. He did indicate, however, that he would like to make sure that the driveway is pitched correctly, so they would be going out to look at that. So, Minnesota State statutes require the following conditions must be satisfied affirmatively for approval of a variance, that it would relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use of the site. The practical difficulties designed for the existing home is, its present condition is, it's in very deteriorated shape and does need extensive rehabilitation. The location on a very shallow lot, even though it's large, is very limited, given the setback of 50 feet from the creek that's now required. The homeowner's plan on keeping the integrity of the 1920s home, it obviously has met the Heritage Preservation Commission's standards, they do support it. Are there unique circumstances of the property that are not common to every similarly zoned property and that are not self-created? The zoning ordinance changed for them, and now the property is not conforming. That is not something that is a self-created situation. It was a requirement that the DNR has imposed on all lakes, ponds, or streams with the updated setback requirements. And will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? In fact, that really is the preview of the Heritage Preservation Commission, is to assure that any sort of front facade change does meet their standards, which they have indicated that it does. Staff does recommend approval of the variance, subject to the plans that have been presented. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chris. Are there questions for Chris? Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Water, the elevation of, water elevation of the creek, does that, that's not a factor? I mean, they're not...
Oh, in terms of flood zone, perhaps?
Right.
No.
Okay, so the elevations are, so that, so that 50-foot setback, which you said dates to like the 1990s, or?
That's when the DNR mandated that we had to adopt new setback requirements from Lake Cornelia, it was 75, it's now 75 feet, and from some other lakes, but most lakes or ponds and streams are 50 feet. Prior to that, all of our water bodies had a 25-foot setback. So, you will see a lot of close structures to a lot of our water bodies, because they predate our current code.
And, I mean, you don't have any straight lines. I mean, it's not a rectangular lot, the creek bends, so, but that was a distance that was sort of directed or given to the city to sort of...
The DNR will mandate requirements, and we have to be consistent with this, with the state requirements. We can be more restrictive, we can't be less restrictive, so we had to adopt what they required.
Yeah, sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? No, thanks. Thank you, Chris. So, if the applicant is here, you're welcome to come up and speak, just please state your name and address. You can go on either side, unless you're showing something. Hi.
Hi, Jean Ray Camp Larson, 2732 West 43rd Street is our office, and I am here on behalf of the homeowners presenting the house. We really, our intention was to preserve that front facade, and we did that in whole, and the window proportions will stay the same, materials will be the same. And then, we looked at the existing roof form, and we sort of really extruded what was there in order to keep the scale appropriate and give us a little bit more room in the floor plan to have this house maybe more in sync with its neighbors in terms of its size and livability.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Strauss?
Are you familiar with the two properties to the south of this location?
Yes.
What do you estimate their distance from the creek is? It looks, from my map, to be closer than you're proposing.
I probably should know the one to the south, because I've just worked on that project, but I don't have a number in my head. But it is very similar, if not closer, yeah. So the creek does do that, it sweeps in right there, at that location. The next one south, I don't have in my mind's eye as clearly. But that kind of, then you get in that, you get in that little cul-de-sac, yeah, part of the street also tucks back in there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we love old houses, so we try to do them right.[1214.12][1214.12](laughter)
Awesome. So this is a public hearing, is there, oh, anybody else for the applicant? Okay. So this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, motion carries, thanks. So bring it back up to the Planning Commission, any comments, questions? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, simple comment, this is incredible in about every way, super tastefully done, practical difficulties are obvious, the use is reasonable, seems to fit to a T with the restrictions that are in place, I have no issue with this.
Any other comments?
My question to the, sorry, to the applicant was directed, the two houses to the south are, from my, I don't have a great map, but are closer than the proposed house. So my concern was, was this property, if we, granted, the variance is going to jump out relative to the neighbors, but I think it lines up very well with the houses to the south, so it won't be that obvious.
Commissioner Lee?
In terms of documentation, I just feel that this is a perfect example of when it, the drawings are there and lays it out for you very clearly, you can see what part of the house and the proposed addition are going into the zone. If you have any questions about where an addition could be done, right away you can see that there aren't that many choices. So, these kinds of drawings are really, really helpful. I want to thank the architect, also thank staff for putting together this very thorough packet. It is a very nice addition, it does match the existing, and it's nice to have the Heritage Preservation Board also weigh in on that and support it as well. So I will support this variance request.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, just along that same line, I, in the staff report, I mean, I thought the whole presentation, especially the information from the Heritage Preservation Commission, that was all very, you know, very persuasive, and it was great information and background about this particular project, it was really helpful, and that was good, thanks.
And I love that you moved the garage back. Yes. So, any other comments or questions or motion?
I motion to approve the variances outlined in the staff report, or to the conditions subject to the staff report.
And that was a second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries, thank you. So, next we have a conditional use permit at 250 Southdale Center for rooftop dining.
Lifetime Athletic is proposing rooftop dining at the building currently under construction at 250 Southdale Center, which is the former site of JCPenney's. Site plan for Lifetime and adjacent multi-tenant building were reviewed and administratively approved by planning staff. A formal review of that site plan was not required due to the main, the square footage of the proposed Lifetime being smaller than the previous square footage of JC Penney's. A footing and foundation permit was issued, and a second building permit for the remainder build-out is currently under construction, or currently under review. Lifetime Athletic is a three-story building plus a rooftop, which includes leisure pools, lounge seating, bocce courts, and the proposed rooftop bistro restaurant. To accommodate the restaurant request, a conditional use permit would be required for that portion. The subject property is zoned PCD III and is located in the northeast corner of Southdale Center. In looking at traffic and parking, there would be no change in access to traffic to the site. It would be, the proposed rooftop restaurant would be utilized by Lifetime Athletic members and their guests, and there's no additional traffic or parking needs that would be generated with the approval of the rooftop restaurant. A number of parking studies, as I'm sure you're aware of, have been completed with new development and redevelopment at Southdale, the latest one being the traffic, or the parking study completed with Untites. That traffic study, or that parking study accounted for the redevelopment of the JC Penney site, with the Lifetime Athletic fitness retail and office development shown. With the building material, there's no changes that would be made to the exterior of the approved building materials, and those approved building materials were looked at and reviewed by staff. The conditional use permit, the Dyna City Code requires a conditional use permit for rooftop dining meets certain requirements, and those requirements are the hours of operation would be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then the city council may further restrict the hours based on the proximity to residential property, or the health and, health, safety, and welfare of residents and businesses that reside near the establishment. Amplified sound shall be subject to the city's noise ordinance. The rooftop dining area shall be kept in a clean and orderly manner. The rooftop restaurant needs to be adequately screened from residential property or residential uses. A liquor license would need to be required to serve alcohol within the rooftop dining area. Fencing or a guard needs to be installed per the Minnesota Building Code, and lighting shall be permitted to the extent that illuminates the designated rooftop dining area and needs to meet the city's code requirements. Staff believes that all those criteria are met. The rooftop generally will be open seasonally from May until September. The applicant has agreed to the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to comply with the city's portion of the conditional use code. There isn't any residential property within close proximity to the proposed rooftop. I have a map here. The Onyx Apartments are located over 500 feet away from Lifetime Athletic. 66 West is located around 600 feet away, and One Southdale Place is roughly 800 feet away. The rooftop and the rooftop restaurant will be open to members of, and guests of Lifetime Athletic, and will not be open to the public. And based on this information, the parking is adequate for the rooftop restaurant, and no additional spaces would be required. Tonight, staff's recommendation for the Planning Commission is to recommend city council approve the conditional use permit for rooftop dining at Lifetime Athletic, based on the following findings. Those findings are that the proposed rooftop is not in close proximity to the existing residential uses, and the proposal meets the conditional use permit criteria that is outlined in the city code. Staff is recommending approval based on the following conditions, that the hours of operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., the amplified sound shall be subject to the city's noise ordinance, the rooftop dining area will be kept in a clean and orderly manner, the liquor license will be required to serve alcohol, there should be a required fencing or barrier that meets Minnesota State Building Code, the lighting shall meet the requirements as outlined in city code, and that the rooftop dining area shall be constructed per the plans presented. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No? No? I guess I do have a quick question. So the fact that they did, you know, originally want to go until 11:00 p.m. or later with special events, what happens if they come back later and request that, or how is that accommodated?
They, I talked to the applicant, and they have agreed that their hours will be posted until 10:00 p.m. If they would want to expand their hours of operation, I believe they would have to come back for their conditional use permit.
To amend the CUP?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. I don't know, you're good, thanks.
Yep.
Is the applicant here, would they like to speak?
Hi, Scott Ferguson with Lifetime, just here to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I was a little disappointed you guys didn't bring a sampling of the food you drink, but, right? Pretty straightforward.
Commissioner Lee?
Is this design unique? Is this the first time it's being used, or have you used something similar around the country?
This would be the first rooftop amenity at Lifetime in the country, yes.
How about the materials and the exterior expression of the building?
This would be the first, with the cut limestone in.
Okay, and is the thought in the future to, if this one does well, that it's kind of a prototype?
Um... It is, and it's also being proposed in a few other locations around the country, yes.
Okay. Then I have to ask, do you know Eddie Wolf?
I do.
Oh, excellent. He's good. He's great.
Yeah, talk to him.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
And this is a public hearing, and I'm not seeing anybody, but...
Move to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Bringing it back to the planning commission for any comments?
I just have one question.
Sure.
About that conditional use permit with the time between 10:00 or 11:00 p.m., is that something we could satisfy now, or is it, was it encouraged by staff to kind of shy away from the 11:00 p.m.?
Yeah, that was our thinking. That was the condition. We'd hate to vary from the first one out of the, out of the gate, but this would be the time, if you wanted to allow hours greater than 10.
Otherwise, this would be the same conversation later, just for a time?
Correct. Yep.
It seems like that this is, that this use is what the conditional use permit, why we did this. And it's a perfect fit for the ordinance as it was written. It seems like if, could we say something in the approval process that would say, if there are no complaints in the neighborhood, or for the first year of operation, staff will consider, will depend on staff to consider extending the hours of operation based on their feedback from the neighborhood, or something like that.
I'm just thinking about the future, beyond a year, if some residential uses are built closer to that building, and now we've extended the hours, not as part, I guess staff would prefer that we make it specific, so it runs with the property.
All right. So they have agreed that 10 o'clock will work for them, so let's leave it at 10.
How late are, how late are other establishments? I guess the only one with the liquor license in Southdale is Dave and Bussers. How late are they able to serve? I don't know how that hinges on this, but if the use is the same at the same time, I mean, I feel like you're on top of a roof in Southdale, it's pretty, you're in the middle of nowhere.
But you may not be.
Sure. But I remember we removed the distance to be upon the discretion of the city council at some point, so we wanted to encourage, you know, kind of noise and activity near residential. But it seems like right now the closest thing is, what, 800 feet?
Correct, yeah, I think it was 600 feet, but I'm not sure what the question was.
Dave and Bussers?
Oh, the hours of some of the existing, yeah, so I'm not 100% certain, but I believe they can serve alcohol up to 1:00.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, in terms of the time, I guess my feeling is that there'll be demand for this sort of thing in smaller nodes, and I think keeping it's 10:00 is a good thing for now. That's my thought on that, because those are a lot closer to residences.
I move approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. So the final public hearing tonight is the alternative urban area-wide review update.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. So just to give a little background before I turn it over to our consultants. Back in 2007, as part of a potential development proposal in Pentagon Park, the city undertook, at the expense of the developer, an urban, an alternative urban area-wide review, which is a long word for an environmental study, takes the place of an EIS environmental impact statement. What it does is essentially look at development scenarios and mitigation factors under certain densities that are built within that area to mitigate those environmental impacts. That project didn't occur, and we updated this A U A R five years ago. Every five years, if no development occurs, we need to update that document. So that's what, it's been 10 years now since the original, so we're on our second update. Originally back in 2007, Andy Moffett from WSB did that study, or was the lead on that, along with Chuck Rickert, who was involved in the traffic, and they are still with us on this project and have done the update for us, and Andy is here to present it.
Maybe, maybe before you start, Andy, sorry. So Carrie, we just had the development approvals for the North and South properties, and so did we have this? Was this part of that review, or, you know, is this updating, changing anything that we?
It does not. The environmental, this study doesn't override the normal comprehensive plan process, the rezoning process. In and of itself, those are kind of mini environmental reviews. That said, some of the transportation recommendations that came from this document were implemented as part of that project, so it was used in that regard.
Go ahead, sorry.
So I just can't proceed your thing. If this didn't exist, when development occurred, then someone would have to do an environmental workup. Is that, is that, the intention of this is take the place of that happening, right?
Had the project been built on the North and South, we would not have to be updating this.
Right. But so the purpose of this, though, is if another, a future project comes along, at the time that project comes along, it won't need to do its own environmental study?
Yes, good point, yes.
Okay. This is kind of does an area-wide study, so it doesn't have to be done project by project?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
You're never going to get to speak.
Because it's hard to come back to this. So did we do something similar, like, what would, what would create the need for that? Is it, is it the size of the parcel of the district that we're looking at? Is that what initiates the environmental impact statement?
Yes, excellent question. It was the size of the project that was brought to the city back in 2007. You know, it was quite dense, there was a lot of, you know, it was Pentagon North and South. So it hit the, it hit that trigger for, we need to do an environmental review. So they could either do an EIS or this, this A U A R. So this was the environmental review that went along with that project.
So what we're proposing for the Southdale area, that does not set off any triggers in the same way?
Not in any individual project.
Okay, I see.
Like that one did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, members of the commission. Thanks, Mr. Teague. As Mr. Teague said, my name is Andy Moffett, and Chuck Rickert, who I believe many of you know, is also here with me, and yes, I have been with this project since 2007. So here we are again, every five years. And so, just by way, a little bit more background, so this is the second update for the Gateway Study area, and again, this environmental review runs kind of outside of the specific development. It's something that's required. It reduces the need to do lots of mini environmental reviews, it covers an area. You are familiar with the area, it's about 135 acres in between Minnesota Drive, Trunk Highway 100, Fred Richards' former golf course on the north side, and then, as we had mentioned, the Pentagon Quads and Pentagon Towers specifically. But really, the study looked at potential redevelopment scenarios within this whole 135-acre area. So what is an A U A R? It's an environmental review document that is allowed by state statute and state rule. There is guidance on how these are performed and when you perform these. It allows cities flexibility by evaluating different development scenarios. It includes a specific mitigation plan that, as Mr. Teague alluded to, when the development that you reviewed a few weeks ago, it was reviewed against the A U A R to make sure the mitigation in the A U A R was implemented with any development that would happen in the area. And it gets updated every five years. And so by way of example, this was the 2007 A U A R original. It's a pretty hefty document, it looks at a variety of things. The 2013 update and this update, it's smaller. It's not as extensive because you're just kind of doing a check to make sure things are still what we thought, we need to update anything. So in preparing the original A U A R per the rules, you look at traffic, air noise, stormwater, wastewater, other infrastructure, parks and trails, historical erosion, those kinds of things. It's a set form that you answer questions about the different scenarios and do the analysis. And this A U A R looked at four scenarios, number one being the comprehensive plan, that is a requirement, you have to look at what your comprehensive plan shows. There was scenario two, which was the master development plan at that time. And then to provide flexibility, there was kind of a maximum commercial build in that, and then a maximum residential build, so the city could really understand what those implications would be on city infrastructure, environmental impact, and what those mitigation measures might be. With this update, there was no need to change those scenarios. The developments coming in, and the things that the city are looking at, because we've had this four scenario flexibility, fall within these scenarios. So scenario one, again, your comprehensive plan, what your plan had contemplated. Scenario two, again, that master plan sort of, that was proposed with Pentagon Park and Pentagon Towers, or Quad and Towers, the high, heavy, heavy commercial, and then kind of looking at more residential in the area, but high-density residential. So when you do an update, you evaluate what has developed, you look at the mitigation measures and see if those need to be updated, you see if there's any new or changed information, and then what still has yet to come is that it goes out for a 10 working day comment period to a number of state agencies and the public. Since the 2013, in the 2013 update, there was a number of areas that had redeveloped around the area. There hasn't been as much this last go-around. Within the study area, there was a 68,000-square-foot medical office near France and Minnesota Drive, that did happen within the study area. There was, there's been wastewater improvements in the area over the past five, 10 years to address some deficiencies in the system. There's been no water supply changes so far, so that did not need to be updated. Nine Mile Creek Watershed has updated their rules, so that is indicated as a change in the update. And again, as we did five years ago, we've also done some updates on the traffic study. So really, the next steps right now is obviously to review it here with the planning commission, and it would then go to the city council in July. After the city council reviews it, it gets distributed for a 10 working day comment period, as I had mentioned. The city receives comments, we work with the city to respond to those comments, and it comes back to the city council to officially adopt, or not adopt, the A U A R update. And then once that happens, it becomes the required environmental review for another five years. So development that comes in, as long as it meets the density and the mitigation measures, they do not have to do their own separate environmental review. So it's actually provides a kind of city a little bit more shovel-ready for, for development, and developers don't have to do their own, don't have to jump through the hoops of their own environmental review. So with that, I am happy to answer questions, and Chuck Rickert is also here if there are traffic-related questions.
Thank you. Are there questions? Randy, I have a question. I guess, I'm jumping right in. So under B, I'm looking at page six, five, B, I'm just looking at your mitigation and the summary update. So like, B1, prior demolition and asbestos survey shall be served, completed, or just in general, these kind of conditions, when, how do these get applied? Are these, so like, is that one part of our approval of what we just approved? Or where does that show up, these mitigation measures?
So as an example, the Pentagon Park, both, I think both the quads and the tower did have asbestos, pretty significant, and they needed to dispose of that properly. They actually received some grants through the Met Council to get rid of that asbestos. So that's an example of how this was used.
So is it through like, you know, demolition permit or a construction permit, is that when we would check off and make sure all these mitigation requirements are being met?
Yes, so it would be part of the initial development proposal that comes in. They knew about that asbestos prior to...
Yeah. Okay.
So they were aware of it, really before they made that application back in 2014.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Nemrah?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, some of these items, I just want, I want to understand process a little better. For example, on page 13, item J1, cumulative impacts, Edina will work with Bloomington and potentially participate in a regional traffic study regarding High 100 and I-494 area and potential, and plan for infrastructure improvements. What does that mean in context of doing a development? Does that have to occur before development can happen, or does just stating it in this document, does that satisfy the environmental goals, so development could occur whether or not Edina actually does do these things?
So a number of these mitigation measures, some are state requirements that we put in here, so asbestos abatement is a state requirement as well, but in order to raise it to the, let's be sure we're all aware of what's going to need to happen, they get put in here. Some of them are city requirements, sometimes there are things above and beyond. But with the traffic, and Chuck, I don't know if there's anything you want to add on that, we knew that there, you know, the city and Edina, to continue to work together with traffic in the area, there could be a regional traffic study at some point. The specific developments that you reviewed perhaps did not require that kind of level of study, but if, if tomorrow this whole area redevelops into what, in one of those scenarios, so suddenly, you know, regional traffic would need to be looked at, and looking at your neighboring communities as far as, as far as doing that. So that's kind of the flavor of that one, that we recognize traffic impacts, and that we're going to need to work with our neighbors on some of these issues, because I-100 and 494 isn't just Edina, it's a regional, it's a regional item as well.
I picked on that one because it requires coordination with a government body outside Edina, where we have a lot less control, and so, and there's various other ones in here like that, where we need to coordinate with other governmental bodies. So what you're saying is, we don't necessarily need to do those things per development, we need to assess per development whether they need to occur?
Correct. It's, as redevelopment happens, at what point do we need to start looking at another bigger picture with some of those things? It's not that Pentagon Park triggered a regional study with Bloomington.
And could you talk, explain a little bit more about, after the city council approves it, and it goes on to a state body or a metro body, and then what's their review process like?
So the Minnesota Environmental Policy Act is where these rules stemmed from, kind of piggybacking on the National Environmental Policy Act from many years ago. And so the state has, there's a, the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board is the state agency that oversees and promulgates rules and guidance related to environmental review, whether it's an environmental assessment worksheet, A U A R, and EIS. They set the rules based on the statute. In those rules and guidance, there are probably 25 local, state, and federal agencies that would receive this. So pollution control agency, MINDA, Department of Natural Resources, it's required to send it to watershed districts in the area, the county, it goes to the U.S. Corps of Engineers, the Metropolitan Council, if you're in the metro, the rule applies to the entire state, so it depends where you are on who you send it to. So those are the agencies that will... So those are the agencies that will receive this and have since 2007 to review and comment.
Sometimes you hear about state agency reviews of environmental things taking many months. Could that happen here?
That could not happen here because there are, the state rules and guidance provide very specific timelines. An A U A R update has a, by rule, 10 working day comment period. What could happen and has happened in rare occasions is that an agency could file an official objection because of something in the document. And usually that would have, when that happens, it's on the first round of the A U A R. It has, it happens, it's happened to me twice in my 22 years of doing this. So they could file an official objection, but then there are specific timing within the rule that you work out that objection with the, with the agency. So it does not stretch out forever.
Thanks. Thanks.
Just a question about this document because I wasn't familiar with seeing one before. Maybe I should have been, but can you cite other examples of where one of these may occur in Edina and if not Edina, elsewhere in the cities? Are they pretty frequent? And, and I guess the second thing is the whole timeline with these updates is, what is the point at which these go away? Or do they just continually get updated?
So these A U A Rs started as a tool, I want to say 15, 20 years ago, but that 10, 15 year timeframe is when they really became very popular as, because it became cities' flexibility to look at a study area. So they're not as common as, and you might have heard about environmental impact statements for the Viking Stadium, those kinds of things, or environmental assessment worksheets, which are for smaller developments. So it's a nice hybrid between the two. Other cities, City of Minnetrista has an A U A R for a development, a large development area that they looked at scenarios on Lake Minnetonka. City of Rosemont has one for their Umore property, which has large develop, you know, potential large development. How's it going to develop? We're not sure. Maple Grove has one on their gravel mine area that is now partly turned into, I'm not going to remember the name of all the development up there, but you've got the gravel mine next to all the commercial and retail and, and shopping up there. So that was an A U A R project. So many cities have them. I don't think I can speak to other areas that would be useful in the city, but it would be large planning areas that you think are going to newly develop or redevelop. And for this project, obviously, it's the redevelopment. It's probably a lot what Edina would be looking at. It was triggered by interest in those two areas and the city wanted to take a comprehensive overall look at how traffic, storm sewer, water resources could be addressed with redevelopment in this area.
Commissioner Lee.
So part of this study shows these different scenarios. And in the different scenarios, now you're proposing in some ways, different zoning for different parts of, of the, the study area. Based on that, now you, you're making some assumptions that it's commercial here or in another scenario, it's more residential, it's probably over here. Is, is this kind of document, especially since we're in a comp plan year, something that we would, would look at this information and perhaps use some of it to, to actually change some of our zoning or impact some of our different land uses in that area? Do cities typically?
I could, I could take that one. All the uses that are contemplated here are allowed under the current zoning. It's just, it's just, it's a mixed development district, so it allows office, retail, commercial. So there's no uses that are.
So we wouldn't get so specific as to say P O D two here, or P C D, or P I, P I D, or anything like that?
Not necessarily. That was really used more just to indicate the land use, P I D being industrial. We didn't have P O D zoning when we first did this in 2007. So we, we just looked at the land use and what that, what that zoning was.
Right. So now you're saying that everything's done under P O D. We don't really need to have.
No, not necessarily. But the zoning did change as a result of that project to that current mixed development district. Before that project, the site was zoned and guided for office.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Charles?
Yeah, and then we put under the forecasted traffic operations, like page 27, 28. It's, it's mostly the tables. It looks like the, like I said, the forecast. L O S, that's what, level of service, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think I've seen these, reference to these numbers, but E is considered, people can live with that? Is that?
During peak hours.
That's the one with the yellow one?
During peak hours, level service E is an acceptable, in a, in a congested, you know, area, level service E is acceptable, yes.
Yeah. And F is, people are pretty unhappy and?
Yeah. F is stop and go. That's, that's where we need to make changes.
Sure. Well, I mean, I looked at this table 11, by 2025 in the P M, under all scenarios, you've got lots of, lots of Fs. And it certainly, but what I, what I thought is really interesting is the mitigation, the, to, you know, improve these intersections, they're all laid out. I think that was an important port, I mean, point was made, there's, we've got Hennepin County, we've got the state of Minnesota, maybe two cities. To have this information, because otherwise, 2040, under almost any, all the scenarios, is just, would be impossible. It's sort of, yeah, I would hope that this information is put in front of the, all the right bodies. I mean, that, it looks like it's really valuable forecasting. Thank you.
We, you know, just to answer the earlier question a little bit more, we, we have had conversations with Bloomington, you know, the 77th and France, or 77th and 100 interchange has been a subject that, you know, the city staffs have been talking about for an extended period of time. So that is, it's, you know, something that they have been talking about, well, since before this time actually. So that, that has been included.
Yeah. And if I could add to that too, we've talked with Bloomington in regard to the sewer capacity because there's the capacity issues there. So we use this tool to help us convince Met Council that we needed to upsize some of those, some of those pipes to the south to handle some of these development scenarios.
So in the transit section on page 31, it says there are currently two forms of transit service in the City of Edina. There's now three. Clover Ride was started actually last week, and that's a senior oriented bus service that goes around the Southdale area, which you wouldn't have known when you put this together. And just in general, kind of dovetailing on the whole, you know, widening roads and adding, or dedicating lanes, I don't know if you're adding lanes, but I mean, at what point to, you know, do we go beyond looking at auto traffic and talk about, you know, transit or, or something? I mean, it's a Met Council thing, it's not really a city thing, but, you know, I mean, at some point with some of these densities, we're not going to be able to have everyone have a car, right? So how do you deal with that in this scenario?
You know, actually, that type of information would be more your transportation plan as part of your comp plan. You know, when you're starting to look at, you know, those, those types of issues is, you know, where, where do you, you know, we strictly looked at capacity and, you know, what, what is needed to handle that traffic on the roadways. We didn't get into, you know, automated vehicles. We didn't get into any of those types of details at that time. As each of these developments occur, like the north and south Pentagon Park that just came through, you know, the mitigations that are outlined in the overall study, you know, were included as part of that study. So, you know, certain aspects of this were included in those two studies. As more development occurs, those types of things are going to be discussed in more detail. You know, do we widen the roads or do we, you know, force people into, you know, other modes of transportation or encourage, I shouldn't say force, encourage people into other, other modes of transportation? So those are, I think, down the road as, as time goes on. But I think the trans, the city's transportation plan that I believe they're working on right now would address some of that in a little bit more detail than this A U A R in this specific area.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Hamilton?
One of the things that the Southdale Small Area Plan began to look at Pentagon Park and one of the pieces that they looked at was the, the real problem that your problem, I'm sure is addressed in your initial environmental study, was the groundwater there and groundwater mitigation and the desire to begin to surface that and show it similar to, no matter what the use is, whether the use is light industrial or, or housing or whatever. And I can't tell from this if any of those ideas are addressed there or should be.
I have to find that section here again. But I know as far, I mean, surface water and some of the close groundwater was definitely an issue that was looked at in the original A U A R.
I'm sure there was.
And how do we, yeah, how do we treat this in order to protect our surface water, but also to protect our groundwater as well as areas developed?
What every developer has done in times past has been buried in underground holding tanks. And what the current thinking, at least in the Small Area Plan, has been is to express some of that water à la the promenade and, and other places so that it's a feature and appreciated instead of an expense that disappears. And I don't know where that, if that should be addressed here in, in the new report or not.
That might be an issue that's more for us as part of the comprehensive plan, the zoning, to make sure that we're taking care of those stormwater issues, we're mitigating that above ground rather than below. I think this document is just outlining the measures that have to be taken in order to handle the stormwater so it doesn't become a problem. It's, it's really a, a choice that the city has to make. Maybe the alternatives could be talked about here, but maybe not set up. The specific direction should be set through the zoning and comprehensive plan.
Great. Well, with no more questions, this is a public hearing. And I'm guessing somebody should make a motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So bringing it back to the Planning Commission, are there any other comments or edits or anything? Motion? Comments? Commissioner Lee?
Well, I just, it's just kind of a hard document to really comment on. I, in some ways, don't know what, what we would identify as, as, if it's so project specific and it's an update. I suppose it's just procedural that it comes before the Planning Commission. I mean, I can't even find anything that we would object to other than, you know, I thought that was a great point, you know, how far can we widen the roads? And we're always just looking at it in terms of cars. But we're looking at it as a planning commission from the bigger picture. And I think that's why you kept getting the comments about, that seemed to fall within the comp plan realm. But it, it's a flag then. It shows us that there is a gap here. You know, we're evaluating and we're paying for updates and reports of very specific things, but the things we're really concerned about, I hope we do get a chance to focus in on that when we do our comp plan update. These, these help us to identify what are those things, you know, that we keep doing these A U A Rs and maybe there's a way to get more information that's useful to the city out of that. I know this is probably pretty formulaic, but maybe there is a way to say, well, since you're doing that, because it is about looking at alternatives and impacts. So no, I don't have any objections to it. I, I don't think that you're asking for us to study it any further or provide any follow-up comment, right, beyond tonight?
Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Thorson?
Do we approve this? Do we recommend the council approves this? That's where I'm hung up on. It's not, the memo's not clear.
Yeah. We're not looking for an official approval. It's just comments that can be forwarded onto the City Council.
Okay. So any other comments to forward on to the City Council? Okay. No? All right. So next is community comment. I'm moving on through that one too. Reports and recommendations.
Point of parliamentary procedure?
Sure.
I believe the addition of the member to the Southdale Work Group should come here. Sorry.
Okay, good. Agreed. So, do you want to talk about that or explain what happened?
One of our members was, is unable to make the community meetings because of the time of day, and not the community, the, the working group meetings because of the time of the day. So we have spoken to someone who applied named Mark Arnold, who would be very pleased to serve and would do an outstanding job. And we'd like to propose that Mark join our working group in place of the member who was unable to attend our meeting.
Is this a formal motion then? Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Great. Okay. So now reports and recommendations, any thing? No? Chair and member comments? Go for it.
I was just saving this from the meeting up there because of the time. I'd just like to recommend in some of these sections, maybe of the comprehensive plan update, I don't know if it's in certain sections, if we can make it really clear upfront, answering some of the why. I think of all the stuff that comes before us, it's all these changes that are more than what's there. And I think a lot of times, we don't have good enough reasons or rationale or vision documents or stuff to specifically point to, to the community to say, you know, why, why are we accepting this change that's greater than what's accepted? And some people are, you know, quoting Met Council like, hey, we've been identified as urban. But some other people are like, well, is that a reason? Right? So I think it'd be nice in certain chapters, like the economic growth of why the city needs to grow. And you look at the trends, I think a lot of the communities like, I like it the way it is. It's a great place. I don't want change. I think a lot of people would, you know, are usually a favor of change when you start addressing some of the give to get. It's like, oh, okay, well, then at least I get this. But I think at least fundamentally and especially the economic session of why economic competitiveness and growth is essential for our community versus like always, say, change is inevitable, but it's also like, we should want it, you know, we need it to thrive. So I don't know where that comes out or manifests, but I think a lot of times talking to the community about some of these changes in areas that are uncomfortable to them, we all have different reasons as to why we support them or don't. I think if we can start pointing to some of the vision documents or being specific in some of these areas, it'd help at least us better as commissioners and the council as well as just anyone who looks at this document if they're lucky enough to, to really understand, you know, why are we talking about economic competitiveness? You know, because we need to. So I didn't see that in the presentation as just, you know, forward at the front. So, and I don't know where it, you know, I think it makes sense in land use too, but I think it'd be important to just kind of dwell on some of the, the reason behind things like that. And I'd be, I'd love to just hear other people's comments, just about, you know, everything that we see is pretty much a change greater than, because that's the nature of what we're seeing here. But we clearly have a role because there's a lot coming to the city that's greater than what our regulations allow for.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah. At our workshop, I thought we, we did run short of time. What Hila had up there, some, in fact, some of the slides themselves, I realized, are probably the documents that should replace some of the other, if you've looked at the comp plan lately, we've got a nice little thing on different types of housing in Edina. Probably was useful for its time 10 years ago or whenever it was, but does it need to be carried forward? Maybe? Maybe, maybe her slide on why growth needs to be incorporated into the comp plan. So there are these passages where the comp plan contains sort of what I call just sort of little learning lessons in there. It's, it asks questions and it supplies answers, which starts to dictate a philosophy of the city, you get a feel for that. And just like you said, I'm not sure if, does that belong in the, in the land use chapter or the economic vitality, but I agree, those things are, this is the shift that has occurred over the last 10 years that we, we probably have to pay attention to. The other thing she had shown was space to accommodate growth. How much space do you need to accommodate growth? If you, and that was where she pigged backed off the dwelling units. If, if you do it this way, you're spreading out, it's a little lower, maybe people are okay with that, but boy, if you, if you started stacking it, now you got this nice green. I don't know if, if the public really understands that. If we can get those as some core ideas or understanding definitions, in the comp plan itself, we could kind of point to it and actually be right when we say it's in our comp plan. What does density look like? Those photographs would be really helpful. Although she only showed, you know, here's 10 dwelling units, here's 20, 50, it would be interesting to see, here's 10 dwelling units, and here's 10 dwelling units, and here's 10 dwelling units. That's where you really start to get the feeling like, wow, okay, so what are we really after? So I would agree with that, that, that I, I, I hope that we continue to have those work sessions because there does feel like there's a lot that we want. We've just learned over the past year that, that have popped up over and over again that probably need to be visited in conjunction with that.
I, I agree. They have some simple statements that really kind of make it easy to understand, talking points. Anything else on that? Sure.
I had brought up earlier, and I may have mentioned it too, but I'd also propose this to Carrie that, that I realized the Transportation Commission was made aware, had a joint work session with council to discuss some specific initiatives of their 2018 and 2019 work plan. And it made me think maybe we had already said there were several issues that, or items that we'd like to put on our work plan list. I'm not sure that merits a, a meeting or a separate work session with the council, but certainly within our own work session as a group, we might want to land on some of the things. The ones that I had already written down and I had mentioned before was, the first one was talking about maximum impervious service requirements, introduction of that. The second one was, and this was off of one of the, I think it was the Energy Environment Committee brought forth this, but incorporating the Energy Environment Checklist into our Development Proposal Review Process. And then the third one was the Traffic Commission had offered to do a review of traffic studies. So when we get something that had traffic and timed, you know, stoplights and how many cars back up, I guess that's sort of their bag. And it would be nice to have a little summary from them like we get from engineering about stormwater management that might actually help us when we do some of our proposal reviews. So there might be other items, but I was just putting on for record, just requesting that maybe we be able to have a work session or some part of it to talk about that work plan. And then the, the last thing I had requested, and I don't know if this affects anybody else, but if there is a way to have sort of a look ahead, I know that several proposals go through the rounds, sometimes it comes as a sketch plan and we know it's going to come back. You can't have a crystal ball, but given that it's summer, it would be nice to know sort of what's on the docket. Even this work session, I think, I wasn't quite sure what was slated for this work session, but it would be helpful to me and I'm sure the rest of you, when you're planning your vacations, whether certain meetings are, are a must attend, so it may just be helpful to have a little more advance notice if, if we can.
So with our, I just want to blank, the goals or whatever you want to talk about for like 2019, do, when do we do that, Carrie? Do we come up like at the start of each year, is that when we kind of set our work plan?
Yeah, it's usually summertime when we start to submit, and I think it's September-ish where we need to submit. So it is something that we need to, whether we talk about it on a regular agenda or part of the work session. Work session might be better.
Okay, so we still have time because we know that 2018's all comp plan.
Right.
Okay. The only other thing, go ahead.
So a few transportation things. I neglected to look it up, but I think the Lime Bike Dockless Bike Share should be starting soon. I don't know what's, I, I thought it was by the end of June that it was going to start. I haven't seen anything with that. Clover Ride started last week, so last Friday was the first ride. That's the senior.
Did you write it?
I did not. I, I didn't have time. But, so that's exciting, that's, that's actually going now. And then I'd also like to point out that the, you know, the transportation studies that we get seem to be quite variable. You know, some we got like from 5000 Vernon, I think the transportation study was really good and it covered things other than just cars, you know, and it covered other ways of getting around, like pedestrians and stuff. And some of the ones we get are just very car focused. And I know the E T C has been working on, you know, advising the city council on potentially changing that, what those requirements are. But I, I think, you know, as we build up these areas in Edina that have higher density, we can all get around in cars. So I think our transportation studies need to change to reflect that. The other thing is, in terms of build it and they will come, we require a lot more bike infrastructure, including bike parking. And I don't know about you, but I see a lot more people biking in the, now than I have even five years ago. And people biking on sidewalks and biking on streets and biking the wrong way on bike lanes because there's only one bike lane on the street. You know, Wooddale, I see that all the time. I see people, kids and adults biking the wrong way in the bike lane. Because they, excuse me, I think they feel safer because it's a bike, it's a designated space for them, you know? But anyway, I think we, we have ways to go on that. And then 50th and France with all the construction there, there's, the bike racks are always full. Every time I go there, the bike racks are full. And anyway, that's it.
Anything else? I was just going to promote our open house for the Greater Southdale Area Working Group. We're hosting an open house on July 2nd, and it's going to be at the Public Works, what? 12th? What did I say? 2nd.
July 4th.
July 4th, come. July 2nd, so it's Thursday, July 2nd, and it's.
You're going to show up on the second.
I'm going to go. July 12th, Thursday, July 12th. Man, I should probably start over with that. It's not on July 2nd. So July 12th at the Public Works and Park Maintenance Facility, which is at 7450 Metro Boulevard, and it's from 6:30 to 8:30. And so this is going to be a, a good, this is really our first real outing with a lot of work, so we're trying to figure out how to consolidate three years of.
Will that be a presentation or just?
I think we're still kind of working on the full. I think we're going to have kind of stations and we haven't completely determined that yet though. Is that correct, Carrie? We're going to be talking tomorrow?
It will be more of an open house type format.
Right. And with, you know, stations with people from the work group at each of those stations to answer questions, but, so no formal, you know, presentation. Anyway, I hope I didn't mess people up. July tw- July 12th.
But you would be collecting feedback, looking for feedback or asking for input?
Yep, absolutely.
Do I get feedback? Piggybacking on that 50th and France, the community meeting is on July 10th, Tuesday night, 7 o'clock. And that is truly July 10th at the Edina Community Lutheran Church on 54th Street, on, on July 10th.
I move to close the meeting?
Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.